All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Alameda City Council meeting. This is Tuesday, April the 15th. It's also Tax Day. If you haven't filed yet, please leave this meeting. And we are about to start our special city council meeting. We will be going into closed session, but we will start with a roll call, and I'd like to ask the city clerk, Laura Weisiger, to please call the roll.
Councilmember Desag.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Asie Ashcraft.
Here.
Three present.
All right. And do we have any public comment on the closed session? Closed session items?
We do not.
All right. So then we'll close public comment. And we are... Do we have to approve a negotiator or no?
No.
No, okay, all right.
Yeah, we did it before, so.
Okay, so we are going to adjourn to closed session to consider one item, and I will ask the city clerk to please introduce that item.
Conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6. The city negotiators are the city manager, human resources director, general manager, AMP, senior human resources analyst, two of them, and deputy city attorney. The city organizations are Alameda City Employee Association, Alameda Police Management Association, Alameda Police Officers Association, Non-Sworn Electric Utility Professionals Association, or National Brotherhood of Electric Workers, and management and confidential employees under negotiation or salaries, employee benefits, and terms of employment.
Okay. And city manager Jennifer, which items are we going to start with first on the list? Because we have the AMP general manager who will call in for those unions. Should we?
We could do that last. We could go through all the others, I think, first and then bring them in. But he's welcome to join for the other ones, too. It's up to you. He's designated for all of them.
He's designated for all of them. Oh, okay. Okay, then.
I think he was there for the previous closed sessions.
Okay, for all of them. Okay, all right, then. Okay, well, then, we will adjourn into closed session, and I believe we'll be joined by our colleague.
Vote, yes.
Do you want to explain?
Councilmember Bowler will be remote in the closed session. He'll be joining us in there.
All right. And is Councilmember Jensen coming? Have we heard from her?
I haven't heard from her, so.
Presumably. But anyway, to any members of the public who are watching, we will be back before you at 7:00. Okay, so everybody involved in negotiations, come on back. Thank you. Okay, good. As I say, if the crew and the balcony is ready, we're all ready. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Alameda. Tonight is Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, as I said when we went into closed session. If you haven't filed your taxes yet, please leave and go do that quickly. If not, it's probably too late. But anyway, we, the council has just returned from closed session, and so I'm going to ask our city clerk, Laura Weisiger, to please announce any action that was taken in closed session.
So the city council had one item in closed session. It was a conference with labor negotiators, and staff provided information and council provided direction by four eyes with councilmember Desag voting no.
Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the closed session of the city council, and I will call to order the regular city council meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask my colleague, councilmember Tracy Jensen, to please lead us in the pledge.
Please, Rush.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. All right, so then we move on to roll call. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
Desag.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor Asie Ashcraft.
Here.
Five present.
All right. And since we're all physically present in the room, all of our votes that will be taken tonight will just be roll call votes. We don't need to... will be voice votes, not roll call votes. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda changes this evening?
We do not.
Right. So then, I want to announce that we have two proclamations this evening. They're on file. I'm not going to read them, but they're both very important, so I hope you'll take a minute to look online on the agenda and read the proclamations declaring April 2025 as Autism Acceptance Month, and also the proclamation declaring April 2025 as Parkinson's Awareness Month. All right. And then with that, we will go to item four, oral communication. And this is where we take 15 minutes now at the top of the agenda for speakers to speak on any item over which the council has jurisdiction but which is not on the agenda. We take 15 minutes now, and if we don't get through all the speakers in the 15 minutes, there's another opportunity at the end of the regular agenda under section nine. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
We have three, so they'll get three minutes each.
Okay.
And the first is Shawna Vaughn.
Welcome, Speaker Vaughn.
I'm not selling seized candy tonight, so just in case you're wondering.
Oh, no seized candy?
No. My name is Shawna. I was born in Bisbee, Arizona. He was a judge from where?
San Francisco.
I was born in Cochise County. He was an Apache, as I am, too. I'm just going on because it's kind of involved here. Many of my family members are Thirial, whatever that means to you. We are. And so we had neighbors. So we lived in service. We were friends and neighbors. We went to church together. We were godparents. My mom was a kindergarten teacher. We saw Wizard of Oz together on black and white TV. We were just pretty close to me and me. And then it came time for my father to move to Cali... Alameda. He was a weatherman. He previously had been in the Navy, but my mom would rather have gone to where? Monterey, of course. Okay. He was still with service because that's where her parents were. Now I'm asking you, what is a liable omission? I don't know. Do you know what it is? Well, for some reason, in the seventh grade, I had this eye thing put in my eye. And I don't know who has that. It could be the police, it could be the Navy. I don't know who these people are. It's a liable omission. And I don't know what they see, and I don't know what they see. But anyway, in June, 1990, I was sexually assaulted, and whoever these people are saw what happened. And so there was a criminal who kept on doing what he was doing. He was not 25 feet away from me. Okay? And there's a case number if you want to see it. If that's... Okay, so 1994, what did the Navy decide to do? No. Yes. What did the Navy decide to close? And why did they decide to close? What did they say? Because of a cost. That's what they said. But we'll get into that later because there are many a liability omission here as we go along. How much... What was the impact in Alameda of Navy closing? I don't know, because I'm not involved in that necessarily. But I know the hospital closed. But I know my two kids are born here, and my kids are out in the world, and they're enjoying life. And Alameda School District does not get an OSLIP from us necessarily, thanks to Janice Goodman. Okay, you know, necessarily. So yeah, they're doing very well. I'm very proud of them. OSLIPs, okay. So, so as I find out, the Navy really gave this to Al... Why? Because they were well aware I was going to become a wounded warrior. I am their wounded warrior. And they knew that, as my father did. And that's why they closed it, because the citizens of Alameda would behave in a cold, nasty, and brutish way, and they have. And I'm professional, and that's their choice, and I'm in peace with that. That's their choice, you know? Fine. I'm professional. Be a professional. Professionals trick... I only have a driver's license. I can't correct... Could I correct anybody else's driver's?
Thank you so much, your time, Isabelle. Thank you. Our next speaker?
William Morrison.
Welcome, Speaker Morrison.
I'm somewhat overwhelmed at the fact that I get one extra minute tonight.
It all depends on numbers. Mr. Morrison, raise your microphone just a little so we can hear you better.
Okay. Can I start again? I'm so overwhelmed that I get one extra minute tonight. You know, it's very rare. I'm back here once again. I'll be here probably a number of times, speaking again on the Fernside Traffic Calming and Safety Project that's supposed to be ongoing. And with that project, I want to again point out to council that the title pretty much addresses the scope of that issue, of the project, which is Fernside Traffic Calming and Safety. I bring this out because, again, I represent or myself live in an area which is going to be affected by efforts of this supposed project to close Gibbons Drive. When I say close Gibbons Drive, I basically mean it will not allow the rest of Alameda to use that roadway as an exit to the rest of the Bay Area. That is something that's been in existence since, let's face it, before I was here, before you were here, as far as that goes. And I can comment on the fact that when I talk about this to various people, their major statement is, who's doing this and why? And I think you have to stop and think about that yourself, from the viewpoint of who's doing it and why, and is it in the general good for the rest of the city? It could be said that this is being done by a small group of people who want to have things the way they want to have it, and not for any other reason. And that's basically what I'm trying to point out. Also, I'm associated with a group that is... has placed a petition to at least be participants in further study associated with this. At this moment, I am not aware of anything happening in the area of further study of this issue. And I guess the basic thing is, I would like to find out if I can and have an avenue to find out exactly what's being done and by whom. So that's basically where I'm coming from. There are some very, how would I say, long-range issues here that would be detrimental, I think, to the traffic and the well-being of the city of Alameda, and I think it needs to be looked into more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Gabriel Duncan.
Welcome, Speaker Duncan.
Good evening. I'm Gabriel Duncan, the founder of the Alameda Native History Project, and I'm here to update you on the Acorns Culinary Series, which celebrates traditional and contemporary California indigenous cuisine. This series has been made possible thanks to local businesses like Trader Joe's, Alameda Natural Grocery, and Night Hair and Bread. The acorns we've used were gathered during the first annual acorn harvest last fall, which saw over 100 participants of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities. We also received 60 pounds of acorns from Jerry, a 94-year-old Alameda resident who gathered them from a single tree on his property. Plus, we received another 20 to 30 pounds from Forest Home Farms Historic Park in San Ramon. We're reopening indigenous foodways by harvesting acorns and producing acorn flour as a community for the first time in over 300 years. We've been processing acorns into flour at the Bay Area Maker Farm on Alameda Point, where we also have a zero-waste partnership with 100,000 Trees for Humanity. The second annual acorn harvest begins this August, and we'd love for you to join us. You can sign up at acorns.nativhistoryproject.org. At our first Acorns Culinary Series session, we made gluten-free vegan acorn cookies. At the second session, we made acorn flour crackers with fresh herbs and perfected the chocolate chip acorn cookie recipe. No crumbs were left.
And no samples?
I wish we had samples, but they got gobbled up as soon as it was made. That's how we know it was a success. This Friday, we'll be foraging with Chef Rosemary for native greens and veggies, which will be featured in our rabbit with mushroom gravy dish this Sunday. There are only two sessions left, with a final one on Sunday, April 27th. Space is limited. Register at acorns.nativhistoryproject.org. We'd like to send a huge thank you to Alameda Park and Rec for hosting us at the Mastic Senior Center, and to councilwoman Tracy Jensen for attending our second session. Thank you all for your continued support. We're excited to share this moment in history with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That is our last speaker. I will say somebody remote has raised their hand, but they just lowered it anyway because no remote.
Yeah, a reminder, for non-agenda items, you have to be present in the chambers. For all other items, you could be remote, or you could be present in person. Okay, so then we will close oral communication, non-agenda items, and we will move on to the consent calendar. And consent calendar items are routine items that are approved by one motion unless a council member removes an item for discussion, and then those removed or that removed item will be heard after we finish the regular agenda. And council members may speak for up to three minutes on consent calendar items. So first, are there any items that the council wants to pull? And remember, you don't have to pull an item to ask questions about it, but the first question is, any polls? Questions? Okay, but I saw Councilmember Jensen with a question first, so let me ask Councilmember Jensen, did you have a question about one of the consent items? Okay, go ahead and tell us your question.
It's... I have a question on item 5E, the recommendation to accept the 2024 Annual Military Equipment Use Report for the Alameda Police Department.
Okay, so who can come up and perhaps Chief Joshi, Captain Kubayama, both of you, all of you. Nice to see you. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, greetings. And go ahead and introduce yourself for anyone who's listening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council and staff. My name is Nishant Joshi. I'm the police chief for the Alameda Police Department.
Welcome. Thank you. And Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Chief Joshi, and thank you and Captain Kubayama for the report and the agenda report. I have one question about... I appreciate knowing how the equipment is used, the military equipment, and that it is a requirement to submit this report annually. My question is about the emergency response vehicle and the use of the ERV. And I bring this up because we're in a, unfortunately, in an environment where the federal government may be entering Alameda or other parts of the Bay Area to conduct operations that would possibly, if it happened in Alameda, violate Alameda Sanctuary City requirements. And I noticed in the report, which I appreciate, that the ERV was used by the federal marshals several times. And so my question is, what... Are there any provisions or restrictions that would not allow the federal marshals or any other federal agency to use the ERV for purposes of apprehending any person, especially a person who would be protected by our sanctuary city?
Yeah, so state law says that municipal police departments are prohibited from participating in immigration enforcement.
Well, I'm... So are you... Are you saying, and is this... Can I be assured that the ERV can never be used when it's used by the marshals, the federal marshals, that it will never be used for immigration enforcement?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's all your questions on this item? Yeah.
Anybody else have questions on item 5E? It's E, right? While we're on it. Okay, thank you, Chief Joshi. Councilmember Desag, your question is on a different item altogether?
Yes.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, over to you then, councilmember.
Question for the city attorney. I believe I have to recuse myself from item 5M because it has to do with the light, landscape lighting district affecting Webster Street. So the question is, do I have to remove myself from the room when the vote is taken? How does that work?
We have not on consent calendar items. If there is a discussion, then I would suggest a councilmember depart. But if there is no discussion and we're just voting, then the councilmember can just announce the recusal and the basis of the recusal.
Can you just remind me what the basis of the recusal is?
The basis of the recusal is my house is located near the Webster Street Landscape and Lighting District boundaries, probably 50 feet.
Okay.
It's the business improvement area I want to...
Yeah. Oh, business improvement area. Yeah, that, too.
Yes.
All right. So, and you said, city attorney, Jen, you said, doesn't need to leave the room?
That's right. Unless there's going to be a discussion. If we're just voting, then the councilmember can stay. But if there's going to be a discussion, then I would advise a councilmember to leave.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay. Oh, sorry. I'm councilmember Vice Mayor Pryor.
Yes. Hi. Yeah, I do... This is a question I did ask through email, but I was just going to ask Chief Joshi to, if you wanted to answer it in person. So I had asked about...
Is this 5E again?
5D, as in David, yeah. So this is regarding the automated license plate readers. So in the report, it said that 68... There were 68 recovered vehicles, and it seemed like a lot, which is good. And so I was just wondering, though, what the statistics were for recovered vehicles before and after the installation of the license plate readers. And so...
Sure. So aggregate numbers, there were less aggregate stolen vehicles recovered prior to license plate readers. If you look at percentages, if that's a question, the percentages are about the same.
Oh, no, sorry. So this is a good thing, I think. So in... So prior to the installation, it was recorded that were 299 vehicles recovered in Alameda. And then after installation, it's 379. And the numbers also went up... Sorry, because you gave percentages, too, for cars that were stolen from another city and found in Alameda. And that number went from 195 to 246.
That's correct.
So, yeah, so I thought that was good, and I just...
Is that your question?
Well, that was my question. It was answered, but I don't know if Chief Joshi had the...
And city manager, did you want to add something?
No, I was just... I just had the numbers in front of me, so if you wanted, I could read them.
Sure. Yes, let's have numbers.
Vice Mayor read them out. But the pre-installation, there were 299 vehicles recovered in Alameda, and then after installation, 379. So a very significant increase in the number of vehicles that were recovered. You know, we can't say for sure that it was all attributable to the cameras, but we do think in large part that it is. So, great work.
Thank you. And may I add, the license plate readers not only alert police officers to stolen vehicles, but also vehicles that have felony wants to them as well.
Did you want to share information about something that happened recently at Alameda Point? I think that's shareable, or is it? Maybe not. Never mind.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to jog my memory. We've had so many cases that we've had as of recent. If you could maybe jog my memory.
At a parking lot, late one evening.
I'm going to turn to my colleagues to see if they can...
Sorry, I don't want to talk in code too much, but Seaplane Lagoon Ferry parking lot, does that ring any bells? And is that shareable? If not, I didn't say it.
Yeah, I can look that up if you give me a moment. I think that is Ferry Point, and it's coming to me, but I'm trying to think, what was it? Oh, yes, that's right. So multiple firearm... There was an alert officer that was alerted by the license plate reader system, and the officer was able to locate the vehicle. There were several individuals that were associated with the vehicle, and I believe numerous firearms were recovered.
More firearms than occupants of the vehicle, as I recall, yeah.
That's correct. So I believe there were seven firearms that were recovered. Oh, six, I'm sorry. I misspoke.
And drugs packaged for sale, if I recall correctly.
That's right.
Please.
And this is related to what Councilmember Jensen was saying. Is there... Can we expect the same, I would say, non-cooperation, but same respect for sanctuary cities with regards to license plate readers if you were asked to track people based on their immigration status? Would that be something we would comply with?
So our license plate reader policy is very clear on what types of alerts can be placed on a vehicle, and those are felony wants. Immigration status are not associated with those alerts. Furthermore, we would not share any of our information for the purposes of immigration enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you. I'm Madam Mayor. Chief Joshi, would you... I understand there's 57 license ALPRs. Is that correct?
So the city invested in 35. However, there are HOAs all across the city that have invested in their own license plate readers. I don't know how many they have, but we have 35.
Well, I think in the report, it said there were 35 stationary and 21 in vehicles or something similar.
That's correct.
Well, my question is, is that sufficient? Would you be looking in the future to add? Are there places that are dark, I guess would be a good term to... that would be valuable to add ALPRs?
So we did a really good job at mapping out the city and looking at all entry and exit points. So if a vehicle comes into our city, it will pass... In order to traverse a city, it will pass... We're confident that it will pass in front of one of our cameras. So at this time, I feel comfortable with the fixed license plate readers. If we do have more vehicles added to our fleet, there may be a need at that point, but I'm comfortable with what we have at this time.
Thank you. And one... Sorry, one more. You flagged the license plates. The ALPRs flagged the plate itself and determined if it's been... If there's an outstanding warrant or a felony issue with that plate. But what about if there's no plates on the vehicle?
So there's still value to that. And if a crime occurs, and let's say a robbery occurs at one of our local businesses or at a residence, and the victims or witnesses report a particular make and model of a vehicle, what we can then do is... And they specifically say it did not have a license plate. What we can then do is, we can create sort of a fence in the area and look for vehicles that specifically match the description provided by victims or witnesses. Then what we can do is, we can work with other... Because a lot of times, people take their license plates off of the vehicle before they commit a crime. We'll then do a forensic review of the vehicle and then work with our partners within the region to see if that particular vehicle has been located and its license plate has been read. From that, then we tap into other databases to identify drivers, people who have been stopped in the vehicle, or even... And definitely registered owners.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more clarifying questions before we go to our public speakers? Okay, so Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on the consent calendar?
We have one, the remote person, so they had just raised their hand earlier. Sebastian.
Thank you, both. Okay, welcome.
Sebastian.
Welcome, Speaker Sebastian.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Hi.
Oh, hi there. Hello. Yes, my name's Sebastian. I'm here at the Alameda Homeless Shelter. And we just had a specific request for portable restrooms. Specifically, we currently have a mathematical problem of roughly 50 homeless people.
Okay.
And one bathroom.
Mr. Sebastian, thank you so much for sharing that information. It's not a consent calendar item, but we have staff in the room. I'm making eye contact with them, and they're nodding, so we will definitely look into that. Thank you so much for letting us know. Take care. Okay, any more... Okay, all right. This is... We have to stick to the agenda, and so this was the time for public comment on the items that were on the consent calendar. Okay, so any council comments on any of the items on the consent calendar before I ask for a motion to approve? Okay, so Councilmember Desag is going to... And Madam Clerk, we don't need to do any further...
No, well, no.
On the business information issue. Okay. But as far as item 5M, as in Mary, Councilmember Desag is going to recuse himself from that vote. But other than that, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Approved by Councilmember Bowler, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor? Okay, all right. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved unanimously, and we then move on to the regular agenda. And we will start with item 7A. And come on up, staff, who is going to present? And come on up, staff, who is going to present this?
Recommend...
And, and Madam Clerk, please introduce Adam. Thank you.
Recommendation to endorse design concept for the Willie Stargell Avenue Complete Street Corridor and Adoption Resolution authorizing the filing of an application for funding assigned to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and committing any necessary matching funds and stating assurances to complete the project. This proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15301(c), existing facilities, minor alterations to existing facilities, including bicycle, bicycle facilities, and Section 15304h, minor alterations to land and the creation of bicycle lanes on existing public rights away. Under the National Environmental Policy Act, this project is a category exclusion under 23 Code of Federal Regulation 771.117(c), Activity C3, Construction of Bicycle and Pedestrian Lanes Paths and Facilities.
Thank you. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Lisa Foster, Transportation Planning Manager. I'm just here to introduce our newest Senior Transportation Coordinator, Susie Huffstatter, who will be presenting.
Welcome, Speaker Huffstatter. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Susie, as Lisa said, and I'll be presenting, taking over this project from Rochelle Wheeler. And I will use the clicker. So first, we'll jump in on background and goals of the project. The project location is Willie Stargell Avenue on the West End, from Main Street to Mariner Square Loop. This is an important east-west corridor for the West End, serving Alameda Point, multiple housing communities, including Bayport, multiple affordable housing agencies, Ruby Bridges Elementary School, Alameda Landing Shopping Center, and of course, the College of Alameda and the Webster Street Corridor. The project goals are to improve safety for all roadway users, including by slowing traffic with a major emphasis on traffic calming, improving safe routes to schools, improving transit service for the rerouted Line 19. This was a recommendation from the AC Transit Realign Plan, increasing walking and rolling connectivity, and reducing flooding through green infrastructure. So a little bit of background and history, the Stargell Corridor was originally planned as a four-lane road from Main to Webster, and then with the Bayport construction, was constructed as a two-lane cross-section, we see here in the top photo. And that extra land on the north side presents a really excellent opportunity for us to provide walking and biking infrastructure. And then from Fifth to Webster, it's wider with four to six lanes and turn pockets, and then transitions into this narrower section at Fifth. So just a quick project timeline. In 2020, the project kicked off with a community survey. There was then a draft concept developed and presented to the community in 2022. Revisions were incorporated from community feedback and that AC Transit Realign project and revised for 2024 outreach. And now we're here for your consideration at City Council, and going forward, we'll be moving towards environmental design and then aiming for construction in 2027. The community engagement led by Ms. Wheeler was very robust, with two community workshops, 460 online survey responses, more than 20 stakeholder groups involved, and a really special focus on outreach to affordable housing agencies on the corridor with five focus group meetings. Those included Shinsei Gardens, Dignity Village, and Stargell Commons, some of them in combined meetings as well, and two for, especially for Dignity Village. The community concerns across that outreach process were very consistent with a heavy emphasis on speeding, especially in that neighborhood. People noticing a lot of speeding, especially going westbound from that wider section into the neighborhood. People also reporting challenging pedestrian crossings and discomfort biking in the area. Our data collection has confirmed what people say about the speeding. Their speeds that we observe around 40 miles per hour, even though this is posted as a 25 in this area. So let's just dive in on the concept plan. The features include traffic calming, a walking and bike, walking and crosswalk safety enhancements, a bicycle path and separated bike lanes, those new bus stops I mentioned for the Line 19, and two intersection roundabouts at Fifth Street and Mariner Square Loop. This is the cross-section from Fifth to Main. As you see in the existing section, there's that undeveloped land, and then in the proposed, we have green infrastructure, sidewalk, bike path, landscaping, and narrowed travel lanes from 14 feet to 12. This is one of the traffic calming features of the project. So going through in plan view, starting at Main Street, this will tie in with a project that's ahead of ours, the reshaped West Midway work that will improve the rest of that Main Street intersection, and then our project will refresh that crosswalk and include new ADA ramps. Then you see the pedestrian path and bicycle path on the north side. That's very similar to how it looks on the Ralph Oppisato Cross Alameda Trail section. And then moving towards Mosley, we have those two new bus stops, crosswalk enhancements that include median refuges, rapid flashing beacons. And then horizontal deflection is one of the traffic calming methods. It asks drivers to shift a little bit to the left and then back to the right to slow down approaching the intersection. At Coral Sea, we have very similar features with two new bus stops, median refuges and RRFBs, rapid flashing beacons. Here, the paths, pedestrian and bicycle come together into the existing path there, and that connects also to the shared path on Bet. That heads up to the water shuttle and northern waterfront. Here, we have the roundabout concepts. We'll talk more about those in a moment. This is at Fifth Street and Mariner Square Loop with a westbound bike lane on the north side there. So to go into more detail in roundabouts, this council has discussed roundabouts quite a bit, and we have a few in the pipeline under construction right now. But I want to note that there's significant collision history here in this area. It's a high injury corridor on the Vision Zero Action Plan. And in particular, I want to note the seven intersection broadside crashes, which is indicative of red light running and speeding, and these are the issues we're trying to address with the roundabouts. So Mike Alston is here from Kittleson, if anyone has more questions about roundabouts in the Q and A. But I do want to note the very significant safety benefit with about 78% reduction in fatal and injury collisions with a roundabout over a signal. So to look in more detail at the Stargell and Fifth Street roundabout concept, this is intended to serve as a traffic calming gateway into the neighborhood to kind of align that street, which is currently quite offset from the wide section to the narrow section, and provide bicycle and pedestrian safety benefits and transitions to the bike lanes on Fifth Street. This is the roundabout at Mariner Square Loop. It has similar safety benefits, and I want to note that the team has put some thought into figuring out how to deal with the in-and-out line. And we've heard from the community at a few points that this is a concern, and so the design does include a pretty long right turn lane to try to avoid having that queue interrupt the access to that single lane roundabout. So we have a phasing approach for the project. The first phase is all of those bicycle and pedestrian improvements along the corridor, and then just the Fifth Street roundabout in a modular design, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. And then the second phase, as funding allows, would be the Mariner Square Loop roundabout, and then upgrading the Fifth Street with landscape and green infrastructure. Current, the current funding plan is for the Phase 1 project. This is an example of that modular roundabout. This one is in the Presidio of San Francisco. And what we intend with this type of design is to do full build, concrete features on all of the outside, all of the curb ramps, and then use some very durable plastic modular pieces to do the center of the roundabout and the median islands. And that allows us to deliver the project on a more reasonable timeline and a, with the funding we have available. So that funding estimate for this full Phase 1 is $11.4 million. Your resolution of local support tonight is for the first two grant funding sources, and then we have a third that does not require that resolution. So we're very fortunate to have had Rochelle working so hard over the years to assemble this $6 million in funding, and we're still working hard to close the remaining funding gap of the project. So as next steps, we'll be moving into the next phase of design. Plan specifications and engineering will come after that, and aiming for construction, as I mentioned, in 2027. So the staff recommendation is to endorse this design concept for the overall corridor and adopt the resolution of local support for the two grant funds from MTC. And I can take questions, and Mike is also here to support.
Nice job. Thank you very much. Counsel, do we have any clarifying questions on this item before we call for public comment? I have one. This is really exciting. That's not a question. But on the, the pedestrian improvements, you noted, or it was shown in the slides, that some of them are adjacent to the Coast Guard housing there off of Stargell. Was the Coast Guard community included in the, in the outreach?
Yeah. Ms. Wheeler reached out to the Coast Guard community during the first phase of outreach, and then the team from Base for Use has also been helping support that process and has been letting folks in the Coast Guard know about the project as well. There's also been some outreach with the school communities, and many of their students go to the schools as well.
There's cross, certainly, yes. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Any other clarifying questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
We do, we have two.
Okay. Let's take our public comment.
Up first is Jim Straylo.
Welcome, Speaker Straylo.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, staff. West of Fifth Street is a wonderfully designed and needed improvement for Willie Stargell. It should have been done when it was first built, so this is well-deserved west of Fifth Street. The problem is east of Fifth Street, because it affects the main Alameda Landing businesses. Often, traffic builds, backs up now to Webster Street because of In-N-Out Burger's popularity, so that when the single lane coming from Webster Street to Mariner Square Loop is built according to this plan, that the, the single lane for In-N-Out Burger will, will clog up, and therefore, people that want to get off of Webster Street onto, into In-N-Out Burger are bound to now block that single lane of Willie Stargell, and then no, nobody will be able to go westbound onto Willie Stargell between Webster and Mariner Square Loop. When I happened to be in Burlingame a couple of months ago, I traveled northbound on California to discover that they have a two-lane roundabout, and I was surprised to see it. I saw it and said, you know what? If one city can do it, why can't, you know, other cities do it? I saw roundabouts galore when I was in Barcelona a couple of years ago, so I know how popular it is. But for the city council to say, all traffic circle roundabouts in the city of Alameda are only going to be one-lane ones, is a little bit short-sighted, and in fact, if this is done improperly, and you get horrible, you know, backup, and if that affects all the businesses, not only in Alameda Landing, but those that are west of it, out at the Alameda Point, then the city council and the city staff are going to have egg on their face for designing something that will, you know, infuriate people that wanted patronize those businesses. So please consider redesigning the section between Webster and Mariner Square, or yet it'll, just leave it alone as it is now, because it's just fine as it is now. Moves the traffic well there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Alan Mashan.
Welcome, Speaker Mashan.
Good evening, Mayor Haskroff, members of the council. Many of you know me. My name's Alan Mashan. I am the operator of the Alameda Point Antique Fair, as well as Mashan's Auctions, and I'm probably the longest tenant on the base, operating there since 1997. This Willie Stargell plan terrifies me. We get, for an average antique fair, over 10,000 people that come into Alameda, most of them probably from out of town. We already do everything we can to mitigate traffic. I've worked with Chief Joshi. We have special signs that we put out, which many of you, I'm sure, have seen, trying to urge people to alternate routes to go on Oppisato Way, or to go on Lincoln, or to even go out to Central. We put these signs up the day before the fair, and they're up there all day. Still, Stargell is at a standstill for most of the day. Now, if you can imagine what's going to happen when you have two traffic circles, and you have bumper-to-bumper traffic trying to come into Alameda to go down Main Street, and bumper-to-bumper traffic trying to leave Alameda to get to the Webster Tube, what is going to happen at those traffic circles? You're going to have road rage, and you're going to have accidents. It's going to be gridlock. And then, if you have an emergency, how are emergency vehicles going to even get through there? And what is it going to do to all of the businesses out there around the new Safeway and Target and all of those other businesses when people can't get to it? I think this is a terrible idea. Tragedy is going to occur. I think you should save the money, put it somewhere else, make Stargell two lanes each way, because you have city-owned property on the side of it that you could develop. This is going to choke Alameda Point. It's going to be, it's going to be terrible for all of the people that come to my event and any other big event out there. And as you continue to see construction of housing and other businesses as Alameda Point ramps up over the years, I mean, when I started there, it was desolate. There was nothing there but me. But this is going to choke Alameda. This is going to be a real problem, and I think that it's very, very ill-advised. I think it's a disaster waiting to happen. I urge you to reject this proposal and allow Stargell to be a main artery to get to and from Alameda Point and to the shopping center there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
And no remote speakers, yeah?
No remote speakers.
All right. With that, we will close public comment on item 7A, and we will open council comments. Who'd like to go first? Councilmember Jensen?
I have a question for staff.
Ms. Susie, you want to come back?
Thank you.
Or the consultant, whichever, or both, maybe?
It's just a simple question about the streets, about the street configuration. It kind of has to do with the comment that we just heard, but can you tell me, is Stargell an artery, a neighborhood street? What sort of a street is it in our, in our general plan?
Yeah, thank you for that question. It's a neighborhood connector in our general plan street classification, so that is the classification that is intended to serve people of all modes, moving from neighborhood to neighborhood and within their neighborhoods. We don't necessarily have a number of lanes or anything like that designated for those. It could be one or two per direction.
Right. So there, was there any discussion or consideration of making this into a four-lane? I know that, according to your presentation, initially, it was, it was under discussion initially, long ago, when the street was first developed, but since that time and during this process, has it been considered?
I don't believe that the, the discussion has come back up since the construction in 2008 to widen the roadway, but if someone with longer history knows whether that was on the table again. I believe that that hasn't been a priority since then to widen it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pryor?
Yeah, I have, I guess, similar questions. So I'm looking at the presentation on page where it says project, sorry, history and existing conditions. So what it says is today from, and I've been on the street, but I couldn't recall this even when I'm reading this. So from Main to Fifth, it's two lanes currently?
Correct.
And then from Fifth to Webster, it's currently, says four to six lanes?
It widens out right near Webster. There's additional turn lanes, and so I think that's what the six lanes is referring to. But overall, it's two in each direction with a turn pocket. Yeah.
Okay. So then what we're looking at, if we said yes, what, is it just one lane each way, the entire, from Fifth to, I mean, Webster all the way to?
That's how the, like, long-term phasing might look, since it's two single-lane roundabouts. We'd keep it with a single lane in between. The first phase that's being funded and planned for near term is, would have a transition from that single-lane roundabout at Fifth to a multi-lane existing condition towards Mariner Square Loop. So it would be, we haven't identified exactly where in that mid-block between Fifth and Mariner Square Loop that transition would open out again, but that would remain in the vicinity of Webster and Mariner Square Loop, four lanes for the time being.
And then you had talked about this earlier, the, where the traffic from in and out, how it would not affect? So I just, I was looking at this, and I'm trying to figure out how, where that traffic goes. And I was just trying to...
Let's, I'm going to skip forward here a little bit. So, see the, the right-turn-only lane that goes into the driveways, kind of that purple, purple-marked driveway there? So that dedicated turn lane would basically begin at Webster. So that queue...
Where the arrows are.
Where the right-turn arrows kind of begin.
Okay.
Yeah. And so the double-right-turn lane on Webster, if the queue were really going really, really long, which I've heard it sometimes does, I haven't personally seen it on to Webster, but I believe that that has occurred, that could theoretically take up that, that second double-right-turn lane, and there would still be an additional lane to access the road. and there would still be an additional lane to access the roundabout.
And so, if I want to go to Target, I would just be like, forget that In-N-Out traffic, I'm just going to go to Fifth, and then go into the parking lot from Fifth?
Yeah, or you would position yourself to get, to be in the left lane, essentially, and use that left lane to access the roundabout, and you could go on Mariner Square Loop or all the way to Fifth if you wanted to go to Target.
Oh, okay, I, okay.
You've got options, yeah.
Sounds good.
You can still get to Target. And let's just go down the road. Councilmember Bowler, anything from you?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilmember Dayceau?
Well, thank you. First of all, let me express my appreciation to Mr. Michon for all his years contributing to the city of Alameda as the entrepreneur behind Auctions by the Bay, as well as Antiques by the Bay. So thank you very much. Unfortunately, I will have to differ with you on this issue, because, you know, I see the improvements that we're doing throughout Alameda of trying to slow down our streets by engineering them and becoming one-way, one direction, one way, another direction, and to also increase bicycle pedestrian capacity. I see that as, in the long term, benefiting the residents of Alameda. I think it's imperative that we implement these kind of infrastructure for purposes of making our place, our city, a lot safer. One of the things that really captures my eye about this project also is, frankly, is the roundabouts. I don't think we will ever beat the city of Carmel, Indiana, which has 150 roundabouts and is known as the capital of roundabouts in the United States of America, but, you know, the number of roundabouts where we are putting in Alameda, maybe if we can somehow become the capital of roundabouts in California, that, to me, that's a plus. So, you know, and in terms of the part of the improvements east of Fifth Street, from Fifth Street towards Webster Street, I think, you know, what's presented before us in terms of, you know, making that one-way, one-way this way and one-way that way, I'm fine with it, but, you know, maybe in the future, you know, if we feel like we have to pivot and to make that portion two lanes, I think, you know, a council would be ready to make adjustments. I think there's other areas where we can also tap underutilized potential. At some point in time, you know, there's always been the discussion of Mitchell Road, which, as you well know, is further up towards the estuary. Mitchell Road as being a major thoroughfare, so we can, you know, begin to take a look at that, at how to make that a major thoroughfare to assist businesses over at Alameda Point. But the long and the short of it is, I do think that there is a safety problem right now. There's a lot of speeding going down Willie Stargell Boulevard Avenue, and so I do think that infrastructure such as what we're discussing tonight is definitely called for. And frankly, you know, I really like the street improvements that we're doing throughout the city of Alameda, not just this part of Stargell Avenue or this part of Alameda. So while I do want to express my appreciation, Mr. Michon, for all that you've done for the city of Alameda, on this one, I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
And I'll close us out with agreeing with my colleague, Councilmember Dayceau, and I also acknowledge Mr. Michon's longtime business here. We haven't always seen eye to eye on some things, but I always appreciate your contributions to the city of Alameda. However, I say this often, the health and safety of our residents and businesses and visitors is my top priority, and while I appreciate that your Antiques by the Bay gets a huge turnout once a month, for 365 days of the year, 24/7, people need to use those roadways, and, you know, I asked if there was outreach to the Coast Guard community. I, from time to time, get invited to luncheons and meetings with the Executive Command at Coast Guard Base Alameda, and they, this was very well-received, this project, when I shared it with them a little while ago, because their families with children in the elementary school cross that street to get to Ruby Bridges, and right now, you take your life in your hand, and they can get out in the middle, and maybe the cars stop going in one direction, and there they are in the middle, and they're not stopping coming the opposite direction, and these are parents, and sometimes, schoolchildren by themselves crossing the street. And I say all the time that we need to get people out of their cars, and it will cut down on our traffic, on our greenhouse gas emissions, but we have to provide the safe infrastructure for them to do that, to travel by bike, to walk, just to get around. And the council is always called upon to balance different considerations, competing interests, if you will, but when it comes to health and safety, I mean, that's just, it gets a lot of extra weight, because that has to be our top concern. Council knows that not a week goes by, almost not a day goes by, that we don't get an email called a SIG Info, Significant Information, and if it's about, if it's a police matter, more often than not, it has to do with a collision of a vehicle with a pedestrian, with a bicyclist, with a cyclist, children, it's not good, and the pedestrian, cyclist, scooter rider always comes out on the losing end, so we have to put this infrastructure in to make our residents safer. And when you just think of the housing that this, that Stargell passes, Coast Guard Housing, Shinsei Gardens, Stargell Commons, Dignity Village, the College of Alameda is near there, and we just want people to be able to travel safely with whatever mode they use, but we have to especially protect our most vulnerable users, and those are our pedestrians, our bicyclists, our seniors, our children. So I commend the staff for bringing this forward to us. I'm very relieved that there's no federal funding that is a part of the funding mechanism for this project, so with our support, it should go forward, and it will certainly get my vote when it comes before the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, but I think this is something that my colleagues throughout the nine Bay Area counties would also support. So with that, I am looking for a motion to endorse the design concept for Willie Stargell Avenue as stated here, and also to, it's to put forth, help me out, come back. We want the recommend, the support letter, does that need to be voted on?
Yeah, we need to vote on the resolution of local support for the two funding sources from MTC, and if you'd like, the clerk could read the whole thing.
Yeah, why don't you do that, and then I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Yes, so it's a recommendation to endorse the design concept for Willie Stargell Avenue Complete Street Corner and adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for funding assigned to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and committing any necessary matching funds and stating assurance to complete the project.
Thank you for that. Who would like to move approval? Was that you, Councilmember Dayceau, seconded by?
Second.
By Vice Mayor Pryor. All those in favor, no, yeah, all those in favor, just signify by stating aye? Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, staff, good job. All right, let's move on to Item 7B. Madam Clerk, would you introduce that item while whoever is doing the staff report comes on up?
Recommendation authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement with Lincoln Property Company, LPC West LP, a Delaware Limited partnership for contracted property management services for two years, with two two-year options to extend, for a total pre-commission cost of $14,435,991.83 over six years.
Good evening, would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Alicia Strauk. I am the Base Reuse Manager here at the city of Alameda. I will be primarily presenting on this item, but Jessica Romero, the Director of Human Resources, and Abby Thorne Lyman, the Director of Base Use and Economic Development. I believe Abby is here to help with answering questions.
She is.
So, we have a team, and I also wanted to let you know that LPC West has some representatives here as well, if you have some questions for them. So, "The city has long used a contractor to provide commercial and residential property management services for city-owned real property. Currently, Lincoln Property Company, or LPC, is contracted to provide these services for the city. Staff presented a recommendation to council back on December 17th of last year to renew a service provider agreement with LPC after completing a competitive selection process and negotiating an agreement. During this meeting, city council and staff discussed concerns that were raised regarding risk and liability clauses of the negotiated agreement, and as a result, council directed staff to try and renegotiate these terms, and if necessary, release a revised Request for Proposals, or RFP. Council also inquired about the feasibility of bringing the commercial property management functions in-house, meaning having these services performed exclusively by city employees. Staff have conducted these activities and research, and as a result of our findings, we recommend that council consider executing a new agreement with LPC West to continue to provide commercial property management services to the city. The current city asset management team is comprised of city staff in Base Reuse and Economic Development, and also LPC's professional property managers, administrators, and accounting staff. Our team works very closely to execute the scope of property management work to ensure the city's assets are managed, leased, and maintained in an appropriate manner. The city's real property asset portfolio is complex and very unique. Our portfolio includes over 400 million square feet of occupied and vacant commercial space, hangars, warehouses, residential units, and over 1,500 acres of land at Alameda Point. Outside Alameda Point, the city also holds various cell tower sites, multiple marinas, the Grandview Pavilion on Bay Farm Island, and the Carnegie Library and Alameda Theater Complex just around the corner. It's important to note that this team does not oversee parks, municipal buildings, and street right-of-way, as those properties are handled by other departments here at the city. So in January, staff revised the RFP for commercial property management services and released that to the public. We did receive three responsive proposals and one that was not complete. A review panel scored the proposals and interviewed the firms. LPC submitted the most competitive proposal and scored the highest in the interview. They have also accepted the standard liability language in the city's service provider agreement by upgrading their insurance policy. In parallel to this effort, staff also explored the feasibility of transitioning the property, commercial property management work in-house to have it performed exclusively by city staff. This included a detailed estimated annual, oh, this included a detailed study by the Human Resources Department, looking at staffing and salary and compensation. We also surveyed other similar agencies to Alameda that have former military facilities, to learn how they manage their real property and the associated risk and liability issues. Generally, we found that most of these jurisdictions that have an intent to retain the assets in perpetuity, like ports or airports or state lands, do utilize in-house employees, whereas those that have redevelopment plans, like Alameda does, and an intent to dispose of assets through development and sales, tended to utilize a third-party contractor for these services. Our cost-benefit analysis indicated that transitioning to the commercial property management services by in-house staff would be at a greater expense than continuing to contract these services out to a third party. Further, the hiring of an anticipated nine new city employees, the many steps involved in the lengthy transition process, and the operational implications on multiple departments were also considered. Lastly, as the city intends to ultimately sell most of its real estate portfolio, staffing needs for property management will condense, leaving some city positions possibly redundant in the future. By contracting these services out, we do have a greater flexibility to right-size staffing as we move forward. So with the points I raised on the previous slide, and the fact that LPC has been able to address the city's concerns about risk and liability with this new contract, we recommend that the city council consider authorizing a new service provider agreement. The recommended contract has an initial two-year term and two additional two-year renewal options, for a total potential duration of six years. The contract value shown includes costs for LPC to upgrade their insurance policy. It does not include commissions that are paid to LPC as it's an opportunity that they use to earn commissions on administering the city's licensing program. City-owned properties currently generate an annual gross revenue of roughly $16 million, and continuing to provide quality and cost-effective property management services are necessary to sustain this income stream. So with that, staff recommend continuing our property management services with LPC West. I very much appreciate your time and consideration of this matter and my pretty lengthy staff report, and we are here for your questions and for discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Strauk, nice job. Council, clarifying questions? Anyone on this side of the dice? No, okay, Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you for the report, and I'm support, definitely supportive, and I appreciate all the work that staff did to bring this back after the last discussion. Can you, earlier in the agenda, on consent, we approved an agreement with Certizine for similar management services, but not identical, so could you clarify what that agreement is and how that's different from LPC?
So Certizine provides residential property management for us, and there are approximately 67 residential market rate units that the city owns and leases out at Alameda Point, and Certizine oversees those. And then our commercial property manager sits as an overseer of Certizine, of our residential property manager.
So this agreement has no, in the staff report, excuse me, let me begin again. In the staff report, there's a suggestion, residential is mentioned once or twice in the staff report, so I just want to clarify that it's mentioned in background, of course, about our real property asset portfolio and elsewhere, but I just wanted to clarify and confirm that there's no residential properties that are covered by this agreement.
There is no duplication of work, but LPC, our commercial property manager, helps us by overseeing our residential property manager, making sure they're complying with rules and regulations. If a tenant has a problem, and they want to escalate it above our residential property manager, then our commercial property manager, LPC, steps in and helps us resolve issues and provides their expertise as well, but there's no duplication of work.
And was that mentioned as part of the Certizine agreement? That they would resolve issues with?
I believe that it's in their scope of work. They're to do tenant relations directly.
Great, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Let's go to public comment.
We have two speakers. The first is Brandon Wang.
Welcome, Speaker Wang.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Brandon Wang, I am?
You can raise the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm the market partner for Lincoln Property Company, so I just wanted to come up here and really express our gratitude for the opportunity to provide services. We have our whole team sitting here.
Hi, team.
An incredibly talented, dedicated team.
They look it, yes.
And it's a really unique asset, and so I think it takes a unique team that's dedicated, that really understands the nuances, and we're not only excited to continue services, but really to improve services, and that's really through tenant engagement, and also through new technologies, which will enhance decision-making process for the city, and then ultimately improve the user experience for the tenants. Our team has a great working relationship with the base reuse team, and so, again, we're just incredibly thrilled to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker?
Mike Meyer.
Welcome, Speaker Meyer. Hi.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Mike Meyer, I have been involved with the oversight of the Alameda Point and other city-owned property portfolio since 2017, when River Rock Real Estate Group was awarded the assignment, and now with LPC West, Lincoln Property Company, through its acquisition of River Rock in 2023. I will echo my partner's comments. We have an incredibly talented and dedicated onsite team led by Shiva Challenger. Many of them are here to? Many of them are here tonight to show their support and dedication to the assignment, and we very much appreciate the city's diligence in conducting a thorough and rigorous RFP process. We were pleased to participate in it, and it really forced us to examine our delivery of services to the city and ensure that we've right-sized our offering for you all and that we're delivering best-in-class technology and tools for our amazing team to leverage. So again, we appreciate the opportunity, and our executive team, of course, is here as well to show their commitment to the assignment. Rest assured that the team will be supported and have all the resources necessary to execute on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
That was our last speaker.
All right. With that, we will close public comment. I am going to lead, just because I was part of the council back in December of the last meeting of the year, in December of 2024, shortly before we sworn in our newest council colleagues. The council voted unanimously to reject the proposal that was brought forward to us, and it was the right decision at the time. And my concern, and I think it was shared by my colleagues, was just the economic uncertainty that was contained in that agreement. We just didn't know what our liability would be. A lot of the liability fell to the city, and we knew we were going into economically uncertain times. I don't know about the rest of you, I didn't imagine that things would be quite as tumultuous as they're turning out to be, but nonetheless, we have to always be concerned with the fiscal health and stability of our city, of the bottom line, and that's what we wanted to protect. I especially want to commend the base reuse and economic development staff led by Abby Thorne Lyman, Alicia Straub, our HR Director Jessica Romeo, HR Director for just a little longer before she jumps ship to another excellent agency, but they did a presentation to me a while back, just sharing the results of the deep dive that you did, the RFP, and great job, great information that we could use to make an informed decision. And to Lincoln Property Company, I also commend you. You didn't exactly say take it or leave it, but it was a little bit sort of implied and for it, at least to me, and we said, we'll leave it, and you came back and said, wait, we can do better, and you did. And you are all right, that this is very unique property, it's very important to the city, and not just the properties are there, but the neighbors to Alameda Point and the development that's going on. And so I'm very excited to support this proposal, but thank you, everybody, for just rolling up your sleeves. I know it took time and effort, but that is how we, as a council, make our best decisions when we really can look at all the options spread out before us, and you did an excellent job. So I'm prepared to support this proposal, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues. Let me start on my far right with you, Councilmember Dayssog. Your thoughts?
Well, I just want to make sure to express my appreciation, especially to the city attorney, Yevin Shen, who pointed out the difficulties with regard to the proposal that was before us the first time. And special thanks to all of our staff, city manager and her team in addressing those issues, and it looks like that all those wrinkles have been nicely ironed out, so I look forward to supporting this, supporting staff's recommendation. And for members of the public, you know, it's important to remember that the vote tonight is an important vote. I mean, we're talking roughly $14.4 million over a six-year period, so this is not insignificant. So I appreciate all the work that had been done, including by Lincoln Properties, so appreciate it. Thank you.
And to your point, thank you for calling out acknowledgement of the city attorney. It is an eye-popping number, but it's also a known quantity. It removes the unknown of what liability we might be on the hook for, so yes, moving forward. Councilmember Bowler?
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for all the hard work on this and over time to get to where we are today, and thank LPC for, you know, showing up tonight with such enthusiasm and such a vision of how important this will be going forward, and it is an exciting partnership that we have with you, and we really are looking forward to, you know, what we can do too to enhance it, because it sounds like you're already thinking that way, which is terrific. I want to note, too, that, you know, city staff and some of the players involved in this did do substantial work to look at the different options, and part of that includes not just, well, we're going to bring these services in-house, but how do we make sure we're having a very competitive benefits of insurance that's priced correctly, that governs the risk correctly and all that? And I think that this is a risk management problem as much as anything else, and it's important for us as the city, I think, to have good ambassadors in the private sector here to help facilitate our leases and our tenants, to making sure we have really good relations with them. It's going to be - this is a really important asset for us, not just Alameda Point, but all the city resources here. So I am in support of the new plan for going forward with LPC.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Prior?
Yeah, I agree with everything you guys have all said so far. I am really glad to see that LPC could accept. Now I'm reading off the staff report, that LPC could accept our standard liability language. As Councilmember Bowler was saying, I really want to thank staff, I think, to do all the work to see what it would cost to do this work in-house. It was just very robust, it was very telling, and it was just so thoughtful. And then when I look at, you know, all of the arrangement that we are maybe going to have after we vote with LPC, all the work that they're going to be doing. When I read this report, it's - there's just so much to be done with this property. It's very complex, and besides all that, like it says tenant relations, coordination of access for showing properties, you know, review of invoices, there's so many moving parts. And then on top of that, it seems like the relationship between staff and LPC is really strong, so I'm very excited moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you to everyone. I disagree with my colleagues, and thanks to staff, and look forward to LPC helping all of our tenants and all of our economic drivers at Alameda Point to be successful.
Excellent. So we're asked to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Lincoln Property Company for contracted property management services for two years with two two-year options to extend for a total pre-commission cost of $14,435,991. The city clerk does this so well. $991.83 over six years. So who would like to move approval? Councilmember Jensen moves approval, seconded by Councilmember Dayssog. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Well, then, no, we don't applaud. Sorry, I didn't read the rules of the road this time, but as I like to say, applaud in your heart, but good work. So thank you, thank you, staff, and thank you, Lincoln Property Company. Nice to see you all. Madam Clerk, will you introduce item 7C?
Introduction of ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a fourth lease amendment with auctions by the Bay Inc. for Building 20 located at 2701 Monarch Street at Alameda Point for an 11-month extension to the rent relief program, deferred rent repayment schedule. This item requires four affirmative votes in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This action is categorically exempt from further environmental view pursuant to sequel guidelines section 15301, existing facilities.
Welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Annie Cox. I'm a management analyst for the Base Reuse and Economic Development Department, and tonight I'm coming to speak to you regarding the introduction of an ordinance to approve the fourth lease amendment for Building 20 with auctions by the Bay. A little bit of background, Building 20 is located at 2701 Monarch Street. It is approximately 63,000 square feet. It's one of the historic hangars on Spirits Alley. Auctions by the Bay, doing business as Michonne's Auctions House, has occupied that building since 2012, and it's currently used as a venue for pre-sale viewing of antiques, auctions, general office, and indoor auction fairs, antiques fairs. The business provides a significant, as we heard earlier, a significant amount of activation along Spirits Alley and throughout Alameda Point. Thank you for whoever forwarded. The current lease term, the property is leased through 2032. They pay a monthly rent of $54,822. That's approximately 86 cents per square foot, and there's an annual 3% increase built in. The proposed fourth amendment is only an extension of time to repay the deferred rent. So the business, as part of this, in response to the COVID crisis, the city did a rent relief program for nonprofits and Spirits Alley tenants, and this was one of the businesses that participated. That program allowed deferral of up to nine months of rent and offered a rent credit if that repayment was completed within the scheduled repayment period. So the previously executed leases, we had the original lease, then we had our first lease amendment, which clarified the lease renewal terms. We had a second lease amendment that implemented the city's Alameda Point nonprofit Spirits Alley Business Rent Relief Program, and that's what we were talking about just a moment ago. The third amendment was just extending the terms of the overall lease through 2032. And then this proposed deferred - the fourth, excuse me, the second amendment in detail deferred a total of $240,833 in rent, and they were given a three-year repayment schedule, so they needed to repay that within 2022, 2023, and 2024. Michonne's paid according to their repayment schedule for the first two years, and then - and they have a total of $77,739.73 remaining in deferred rent that is - remains due. The tenant is current on all other base rent. Michonne's proactively came to us, and they requested a fourth amendment to extend the repayment period for that last year, that last $77,000. So the proposed fourth amendment changes the term to starting February 1st, so it's retroactive, through January 1st of 2026. There would be 10 fixed monthly payments and then a final payment of $8,897. The proposal also requests no late fees or interest charges on the deferred rent, and that is in - that's the same terms that we had with the other tenants that participated in this program. Because this is extending that third-year repayment period, they have forfeited their rent credits, and they will continue to pay their monthly base rent and all other amounts due. As of April 15th this morning, we confirm that Michonne's has paid their February 1, March 1, and April 1 fixed rent payments and the repayments per this proposed fourth amendment. So staff's recommendation is based on Michonne's being a really good tenant in good standing, long-term tenant, and a key member in activating Spirits Alley. Their non-payment was due to a transition in accounting staff, and they were very proactive in approaching. The moment they found that out, they came to us and they requested that they laid out a proposed schedule, and that's what we're bringing to you tonight. So thank you so much for the opportunity to present this item to you. I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Nice job also. Okay, so council, clarifying questions? And just a reminder, because this is a lease of city-owned property, we will need four affirmative votes, and maybe we'll get five. But anyway, any clarifying questions before we go to any public comment? Do we have public comment?
We have none.
Okay. Well, I'm going to exercise the mayor's prerogative and go first and just say, I see no reason why we wouldn't approve this recommendation. As the council knows and staff knows, we have many different tenants at Alameda Point, and sometimes they fall in arrears with their rent for a variety of reasons, and they approach that situation in many different ways. So when I see a tenant, and again, not just any tenant, probably one of our most longstanding tenants, I think along with Brad Shook, who started Bladium, I tease him that he was out there at Alameda Point when tumbleweeds were blowing down the street. It was like the Wild West, because really, they took a chance on Alameda Point, and that's what it takes, someone to just say, yeah, I'm going to give this a go and look at this, you know, all these years later. And our city manager, in fact, spent a good part of her career with the city as the base CEO, Chief Operating Officer of Alameda Point, and she's dealt with all these different situations. So I - and you look at the monthly rent we're getting from Mr. Michonne, from his business enterprise, and just add that up over the years since 1997, so why would we not give him the benefit of the doubt now? So I'm all in, but let's hear from the rest of you, or a motion, whichever. Who wants to speak up? Vice Mayor Prior?
I was going to say, I agree with the mayor. I look at this as an investment in keeping a reliable and great tenant and in the beloved community business, so.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I also would say to the points that have been made, the reason that we have a great community here and a lot of people come here, and as Mr. Michonne mentioned even earlier, we have a lot of people who see Alameda for the first time to come over to Alameda Point to come to the auction, and so it is a great resource, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve the lease extension or the lease amendment.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Jensen, seconded by - and Councilmember Bowler, please.
I'll just make a second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowler, and I would add, yes, people come from all over, from distances, from, you know, probably out of state even, but definitely all over the state to come here. Yes, no, it's great. Councilmember Dayssog?
Just a quick comment. Just want to say again, you know, thank you to Mr. Michonne, who is, by the way, an Alameda resident, as we all know, but the members of the public need to know.
We know where to find him.
Thank you for sticking with us through all these years, whether it was through 9/11, whether it was through the Great Recession of 2009, 2010, or even COVID. I mean, you were with us when we were all on dial-up AOL, so thank you for being there and, you know, helping solve our - helping affect positively our fiscal situation as well, given the sales taxes, et cetera.
And you know, Councilmember Dayssog, you just reminded me of something during COVID. Mr. Michonne, you were such a good community partner, because, you know, I like to say back then, we didn't know what we didn't know, and also, we didn't have a vaccine for COVID. We didn't have medical treatments, and it was very - we didn't know exactly how it was transmitted, but we knew that people were getting very sick and were dying. And I remember we had a conversation, and you said, I don't need to wait to be ordered to close down my antiques by the Bay, even though it represented a huge loss of revenue for you. I'm just doing it, because I can't ask my vendors to come out, I can't ask the people who shop there to be exposed to whatever this virus is. I remember that now, as my council colleague was speaking about COVID. So these are the kind of businesses that we love to have here in the community. So we've had a motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Bowler. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, have all our votes been unanimous today? Oh, my goodness, we should like go buy a lottery ticket or something. Okay, and I'm just going to say, well, maybe I shouldn't say it, yes, oh, I will. You're not going to get a break tonight, counsel, because I give a break after two hours, and I don't think - maybe I shouldn't say that, I'm not going to finish that sentence. Anyway, we will then move on to item eight, which is city manager communication. City manager Jennifer Ay.
Thank you. And I don't know, I may extend past nine, because I have so many events.
That's why I didn't finish the sentence. But it would be till 9:10, because we started late.
That's right. I do have a longer list tonight, so bear with me. Alameda Police Department's Bike Patrol is back in service now on e-bikes. They'll be patrolling areas based on recent crime data and be giving out citations, but also stickers for our little, little people.
Oh, just little people? Even if we do something right?
No, no, no adults. This Saturday, April 19th, is the Spring Shindig at Alameda Point Gym and Field. We'll be celebrating Earth Day with crafts, vendors, a petting zoo, bounce houses, and more. So join us from 12 to 3. And also taking place this Saturday, April 19th, our Neighborhood Greenway pop-ups on San Jose and Chestnut, and on Versailles at Lincoln, both taking place from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. So stop by to learn more about Neighborhood Greenways, see draft concepts, and share concerns and ideas about walking and biking. Caltrans will be starting construction on the Oakland-Alameda Access Project this fall. When the project is complete, it will bring significant benefits to Alameda neighborhood communities in Oakland. However, during construction, travelers can expect delays through the Webstrom Posey Tubes. The Alameda County Transportation Commission is hosting four in-person open house and, open house events on April 23rd, 24th, 29th, and 30th, and one online event in May to share more information on this project and the construction and road closure schedule. So you can find more information on the city's website. Two more. Next Saturday, April 26th, from 11:30 to 2:30, is the Annual Alameda Bike Festival, this year at Payden Elementary School. And this all-age event includes free bike repairs, bike helmet fittings and giveaways, bike rodeos, a cargo and e-bike expo, safety classes, food trucks, music, and more. And then lastly, Pacific Fusion is exploring the development of a nuclear fusion demonstration facility at Alameda Point, and are hosting a project town hall on May 1st from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the College of Alameda. And more information, I'll link to RSVPs on the city's website. So a lot going on right now.
Lot going on, yeah. Did you want to mention the specific days of the Oakland, I mean, of the Alameda open houses for the Oakland?
Oakland Access, yeah. It's the April 23rd, 24th, 29th, and 30th.
But the ones in Alameda are, come on, Communications Director Sarah Henry?
The 24th, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember Sarah Henry, Communications Director for the city. The Alameda Chamber is hosting an event on the 24th, and the 30th is the event that's at the College of Alameda.
College of Alameda.
So 24th and 30th here in Alameda, and then, of course, the virtual one.
Exactly.
You can be at your house.
Everybody can, you know, attend one of them. Okay, thank you. Great. Lots going on in Alameda. Any more, or communications? Okay, so then we will go on to, we don't have council referrals, but council communications? Council? Councilmember Jensen?
Yeah, thank you. Wow, it's so early. I will be fast, you won't have to take a break. On the 5th of, of this month, we had the Remove, Reverse, Reclaim Event. Event, I would call it a, a big event. They say that there were maybe 1,000 people here at City Hall, organized and, and speaking and listening to our poet laureate from Alameda, and hearing from other, from people from All Rise, Alameda, and others about what we can do to protect human rights and support our community here in Alameda. And I was able to attend that event, enjoyed it very much. On the 7th, I ran into the mayor at the Child Unique Gallery of Heroes, the Women's, of Women's History and Black History. It was great to see all of the artwork and exhibitions by those really smart kids at Child Unique Montessori. That was interesting. I also didn't, I, I was, it was virtual, so we weren't in the same room, but I did see our city manager, Otte, and Victor.
Flores?
Flores, Flores, who represents, yeah, the BART Board, to speak to the Alameda Democratic Club and, and to all Alamadas. It's not just, it's everyone in Alameda that can participate to learn more about what we can expect economically and addressing some things that we've, that we have planned for our future here in Alameda and on BART. Hopefully, it, it's not all bad, but it kind of is. Thank you for sharing that, city manager. And then finally, as we heard from, from, from the Alameda Native History Project, thank you, Gabriel, we, I was able to attend the Acorn Project Cooking, Cook-Off, I guess you would call it, on this past Saturday, Sunday. At, it was at Mastic Senior Center. It's really nice. It was, they had Mastic Senior Center, there were a number of, of participants, and the, Gabriel, you did a great job, I must say, with the cooking and keeping time and, and identifying which ingredients went where. And really, but the best part was the explanations, the explanations about how acorns are used, how acorns are, the indigenous uses of acorns, but also how, how it's so important to, how to be collecting them and how to be, to preparing them. And, and it was, I just want to go out and get some acorns and start cooking them. So with the help of, of the Alameda Project, the Alameda Native History Project and the Acorn Project, I will be doing that sometime in the future. Thank you.
I had a very, I laid low the last couple of weeks, so I don't have anything to report.
Anything from Councilmember Bowler?
Just April 9, the, basically it was an Eric Craft Noise 101 workshop, which meant that I unfortunately missed the city manager's presentation at the club, but otherwise, yes, that's all I have to report.
Okay. And Councilmember Desog, nothing for you? And so I, and I also missed the city manager's presentation, because I was out in Livermore for the Alameda County Mayor's Conference that we usually go to together. I carpooled with the mayor of San Leandro, and it was all my fault, but as we were getting back into our cars at the Concanon Winery in Livermore where we met, I said, well, we won't run into any traffic on the way back, because it's after, never say that. So what you should know is on 580, pretty much all the way from Livermore to Castro Valley, it was bumper to bumper, they're doing road construction. And actually, as a member of the Alameda County Transportation Commission and MTC, I should know that they're doing a bunch of things that's part of the toll road expansion and just, but we caught up on a lot of things, but you missed traffic snarl. But the, and then, yes, I was at Child Unique Montessori last week one day for a great presentation on Black History Month that the kids did, but they actually had created with cardboard, like boxes and stuff, the bus from the Montgomery that, that Rosa Parks sat on, you know, and then it was, it was amazing. And then it turns out that they were also celebrating Arab American History Month, and there was a presentation about the mayor of Alameda, and it was the sweetest thing ever. And then, speaking of public transit, because Victor Flores, who is our representative on the BART Board, also spoke at the City of Alameda Democratic Club. So you've all heard about the fiscal cliff that our transit systems, AC Transit, BART, Muni, Caltrain, and I think Valley, one of the Valley ones, Lafta or something, but they are all running into difficulties. You can do your part by taking public transit as often as possible. I mean, yesterday was a whole morning of meetings for me at Alameda County Transportation Commission, our policy committee meetings, and it is so easy and so lovely to just hop on the 51 bus and just get off. And there's all kinds of things that you can get to, to San Francisco all around by using public transit. So check it out. We've got the ferry or several ferries. There's no end to the public transportation opportunities you can use, and you will support those systems that are really important for us. So with that, I am adjourning this council meeting. My goodness, it's 8:43, which kind of makes up for some past ones. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff and council members. We conducted some important business from closed session on, and go have a good rest of your evening, and we'll see you soon. Thank you. Good night. Amazing.